Oh, yeah.
Because.
Exactly what have you got?
I put it in there. I have to choose the name. If they channel your information, so some people.
Morning.
They don't.
My name?
So being here first.
Good morning.
Bill, I'll do it if I can.
I'll not be a class.
Okay.
I'm going to visitation with Ms. Gooseby.
Oh, yeah.
She passed away and her visitation is tonight at Will's Point.
Yes.
So I'm on that's where I'll be.
Okay, but you gotta you gotta fill in for me Sunday. I'm gonna be gone Sunday.
You're gonna be gone Sunday?
Yeah.
Did you?
Yes.
Okay.
So you, Greg, whoever's left of therapy guys.
All right, we'll.
Carry on.
We'll sing a little louder.
Just sing joyfully.
Yes.
I talked to her yesterday.
All right. Loud phone. Give me a break, you know? It's a little better than it's supposed to. Yeah, we want to kind of. Morning. How you been doing?
Hey, Jeff.
How you doing?
Did I make you copy, didn't I?
Yes.
Anyone want to speak on any items? He wants.
Thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we'll be we'll have one prayer that remains standing for our pledge. And every Father God, we just come before you and we just pause and say thank you for all the many blessings that each one of us have. Lord, we thank you for the help of being here today. God, we just pray that you continue to bless Vence County. We thank you for all the blessings you give to this county. God, we ask that you just be with us, the Commissioners' Court, and everyone present in the decisions being made for Vence County. Lord, we ask that it be your will, not our will, but the direction you would have this county go. God, may we be obedient to you and servants for your Christ name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Called to order the regular session meeting of the Vence County Commissioners' Court on Wednesday, June the ninth, twenty twenty-one, at nine oh three AM. Quorum is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meetings of the Commissioners' Court approval, same for May the twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and May the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Gentlemen.
Same. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner LaPrada. There was some corrections of y'all.
We got we got we got.
All the new corrections and everything. There were some changes, so everyone has the the new ones. Okay? Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner West.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about the bills that were submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted.
Gentlemen.
Got a motion by Commissioner Melton.
Say aye.
Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion about ratifying of the bills? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. General business, is there any general business we need to be made aware of? Any announcements?
The adult probation got moved back into their office last night. So. We're winding up, we're still like down the hallway doing a little bit of stuff and. JP two could at their her courtroom is usable. Going to start in Will's Point either tomorrow or Monday. No Friday.
Okay. We're good. They spent a long time. Those winter storms, we're trying to dig out from under the winter storms and all the. I would announce that this is the last week for COVID. We're still giving the COVID vaccinations at the firegrounds out here. Anybody that would like a free COVID vaccination, they're available out there. If you go to the firegrounds, they'll give you a vaccination. Is there any other announcements we need to be made aware of? Being none, we'll move to public comments. Scott, anybody sign up for public comments? Okay, no public comments. We'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider accepting a donation of two AEDs from Prestus EMS valued at one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents each for a total of two thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty cents. Sheriff.
Good morning. Yes, Prestus was very generous in donating two portable AEDs for us, two of our squad cards to be able to offer that type of medical care on the scene to hopefully save some lives. We just asked permission from the board to accept those two AEDs and then the places of two of our squad cars.
I'll make a motion to accept them, sir.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brad, second by Commissioner West. Where will where will they be located?
Uh, we're just gonna put them in probably two of our sergeant's cars one day, one night. The hope is to get some more before it's a time and be able to have at least one of them shipped and eventually we'll go. We have one every every deputy's car.
Okay.
We're just thankful and grateful they were able to make a donation for those two.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? All in favor of accepting the donation of the two AEDs, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider retiring Sheriff's Office K-9 Rico, K-9 Officer Rico, and donating Rico to the handler Kevin Bridger.
Kevin Bridger's moved on to another agency. He's now working for Grand Celine Police Department, and so K-9 belongs to the county. And as of right now, we're still paying Deputy Bridger two hours per day for maintenance of the K-9, which K-9's only being used at most once per week. And so basically that's one year service life left. Reclamation's been one year that it can serve in that capacity. So because of liability reasons, my reclamation is donate the K-9, retire, officially retire and donate that K-9 to his handler, which is Kevin Bridger. And by retiring it, that would, I guess, eliminate any possibility of it being used as most passes as a K-9 road protection dog and protect it like old county. So that would my reclamation.
I can motion that we retire the sheriff's office K-9 in donating Rico to Rico, right?
Mm-hmm.
Rico to his handler, Kevin Bridger. Second, got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion?
Tony, you were gonna look into that and make sure everything was all, everything's good?
Everything's good. Do it that way.
Thank you.
As long as we have it in the minutes, we don't need any additional. Okay.
And the dog's not transferable due to the way we obtained him, right? He's gotta stay with us or retire.
Well, he could for one more year. There were other options, other things we could do to to let it go. But we don't want to do that with this dog. This is a very aggressive dog. It takes somebody like Heather who who knows the dog, the dog trust to control it. They give it to another agency with a different handler. There's a potential for a lot of problems. This way, the county has the dog with any liability. We're only giving out one year of useful life left and this insurance with the dog that that no one has our signature approval to use that dog as a police parent in capacity.
Just for everybody, a reminder, Rico's already been retranked once to to a new handler. And so it would it would be real hard to do that again, and it would take more than the year that we have left to do that.
And it's actually this is fourth.
It's fourth. Well, second handler within Vence County.
Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion, a second. All in favor of retiring Sheriff's Office Officer K-9 Rico and donating Rico to the handler Kevin Bridger, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Two ladies, second. I thought.
Okay.
Yeah. Discuss and consider signing contract with correct commissary as commissary provider. Sheriff, I jurors.
Yes. So we have a found another commissary provider that we would like to have a contract with. County. All commissary funds, I guess, according to the government code is controlled by the by the sheriff. And that money used, the money made in the commissary goes back into the to the jail department. And so we're actually going to get a higher percentage when we're getting with the current company. And I'm actually gonna have Lieutenant Harrelson come up as well. She's our jail administrator. And like I said, it's just a better deal for us as the Sheriff's Office, and it's the one we selected to go with. You should have a contract there in front of you. I can answer your questions also. Travis with correct commissaries here today with representative company. We have any questions for him as well.
Well, I don't, we don't.
We're talking about doing that on the twelfth of July, is that right?
No, 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 different.
This is the commissary.
Oh. Yeah.
So I guess, Sheriff. Who are we under now and when does?
Lone Lone Star commissaries who we're with right now.
And when does that contract expire?
Her voice is about that.
Okay. Okay.
You just you say you're getting a better deal, like.
Well, we were twenty-five percent across the board. This one, we're at thirty-two percent, some items twenty-five percent and other items. We also have the goal to go out, we want to make purchases from Sam's or other places and sell items ourselves at the commissary, make more money. We can do that, but at the same time, we have a lot of companies that are taking care of us. So there's there's options there that we have.
Guess you'd research. You say there's a representative from this county?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Well, that's certain.
Okay.
Uh, question. When did you say that you're gonna try to change this over?
July.
July.
Because the contract that we have states in here that either party can give notice of termination in writing by registered mail at least sixty days prior to expiration of this agreement. Okay, and you gave them the written notice and all that stuff?
Okay.
Yeah, commissary.
It's set during first, but they've been written. If they gave them sixty days, that would save term. Yeah.
I don't have a copy there.
Well, I didn't need it just a minute ago, but it came flying over the counter.
I mean, that's.
Didn't see it first, so I saw it as a paper.
Okay, well. Okay, I mean, I don't think it takes any, the commissary is yours, Sheriff.
We just, you know, like I said, we want to be transparent.
I appreciate that, Sheriff. And I I think all the public does, this is something that he can make on his own decision and not not come to this court and not notify you about it.
Yeah.
Like I said, as I said early on, I want to have a strong relationship with the Commissioners' Court, every branch of the county government. That's kind of what it's about.
So move Pearson.
Okay, got a got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Melton. I don't think you need court approval. Uh, you can vote, but we can we can vote on it.
Operation.
Yeah, we can vote on it. Uh, yeah, motion. I've got a motion as second, all in approval, the and that will be your contract.
Yes, sir.
That won't be a contract between the Commissioners' Court. That'd be up between you and me. Okay? Have a motion, second. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider signing contract with Correct Solutions for Jail Phone System.
It is essentially, it's the same company as we're looking at the commissary, which we'll all kind of talk to each other more candidly. So the current phone contract was executed on July tenth, twenty nineteen, and should expire on July tenth of twenty twenty-one, which is months. We already sent notice. We do not want to renew. And we would like to place a new contract with Correct Solutions to provide our inmate.
Okay, and uh, and this has been, I mean, kind of an issue I talked to with Doug Morgan. I spoke spoke with him in the position here is that I did sign the contract in May the twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. The contract was for July the tenth, two thousand and nineteen. But Mr. Morgan's position was, but we didn't get to install our equipment till, I believe he said October. So that's where the two-year contract will begin. And so I sent in the Tonda, let Tonda look at it. I've spoke with Tonda. Tonda, you if you want to address the court, you can, or her position is we go either way.
The contract that they presented was, in my opinion, very poorly drafted because there's a clause in there and I had to. There's a clause in there that says it begins when it's executed. But then there's another clause that says it it ends from two years from start date, but start date isn't defined anywhere in the contract. It doesn't say, is that when they started installation? Is that when they started talking about it with us? Is that when it's signed? So there's a very, very trouble and principle of law that that when a contract is unclear, it is interpreted against the party who wrote it. So so given the fact that this contract is unclear, if the word be litigated, it will be interpreted against the company because it's their contract, it's their that wrote it and presented it. It's an arguable, defensible position to go either way. There is absolutely no problem, in my opinion, with holding firm on the position that it expires in July. So little, the revenue that the company could claim was lost in that nine-day period would not be worth the expense of litigation if it's suing us. If they did sue us, we would be in a very, very. So I think it's a defensible position either way. Personally, I see no legal problem with us maintaining our position when it expires.
Okay.
Just I don't guess you're happy with the president?
Yeah, and we're not happy with it. Out of you, emails, and some will send to me, or someone to judge. Very difficult to deal with, and I want to have to deal with having these two companies that are basically a scent company with the commissary inmate phone system work together and talk to each other as we pretend to hear even more machine talk.
I had a few talks with the cell, and I think the question is, um, to want to, um, actually, I had a text message that you would be ready for. And what he says, the companies aren't really comparable, but it's using. Or actually, our phone system seems to go into concert. Everything's gonna fall around the children.
Is the current company meeting is part of the contract, other than being a little difficult to work with as he providing the services his contractor for?
Yeah, I would say so. And I don't know the big issues with that. Our recommendation is we end this contract July tenth before the company.
Well, I didn't get a copy of the contract. I had this one the other day, and I just brought it in here with me.
So you want to end the contract with NCIC?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Melton to end the contract with NCIC effective July the tenth. Uh, at your second attempt?
Yes.
Doesn't it need to say who we're going with? End it with them and go.
Yeah, probably does.
So so we can. And you said you do have written confirmation from them that they're fine with pulling out in July?
Well, I talked to him last week and he wasn't fine with it. He, I mean, he, I I called him because he told and left a couple of messages. He was calling the office pretty regular. And I talked to Doug Morgan, which, I mean, it's a business. I mean, and I I understand that. And but his position, when I spoke with him, was, and like Tonda said, that paragraph raised the term of this contract will be for one two-year period and will become effective from the date of the contract execution. Well, the those are two different dates, and will expire two years from start date. Okay? I mean, that's that's very vague. And but his position in the conversation was, he believed it to be October. And and you heard what Ms. Curry spoke on, and so.
July the tenth.
Right. Okay, so you're to terminate the contract with NCIC on July the tenth and enter into a contract with Correct Solutions.
For jail phone system.
Okay, that's your motion?
Does this Correct Solutions have the same terminology in their contract? I kind of like to avoid.
Much more detailed. I have.
If I may, I can break clear to that. So I would say Correct Solutions and Correct Commissary are all the same relative as far as the parent company. That word is used very, it's very vague. Our contract says there very specifically, so we can't sit here. In fact, if they've been effective execution, they have a contract that's been two parties signed. The start date, the Doug is saying for October as far as when services go live. I've been in this industry for almost six years. Everything is based upon the execution of the signatures in this industry, not when something goes live. Because there's a there's a timeframe that you have to order equipment, get your people together from the signature date. That bill of life date can vary on a lot of different factors. So if you use that as an execution date in a contract, that's not how the industry works, just so you know. So there is a start date with execution date in a contract. That's very vague. Um, that's that's not how the industry runs. So in our contract, it's very specific. Two parties sign, judge in your case, it would be that, and then also the president of our company is based upon the signature of those two pictures.
Well, it's my understanding they couldn't start because the other company couldn't get out to October because their contract went to fault. So it ain't like he didn't start on his own for us. He started way good.
Right. I don't know what happened with the previous administration. I'm I'm not privy to that. Uh, but I do know that with our company, we're also paid thirty-five to thirty jobs to the to those to to the county as well. We've actually set up a call center in the county to help service the county. Um, and I know the previous company was not doing that also. Um, so we're what happened with the previous administration, like I said, I'm not privy to, but I do know we've taken place from that one. And start date, the execution date in their contract, they don't line up.
Well, I would like, if we're gonna make decisions on this, a little information beforehand, like the contract that we can look at.
Yeah, the Commissioners, they don't have a, they don't have the NCIS contract, NCIC contract, and they don't have the the con, well, I guess, do you have a contract with this company?
Gentlemen, I've seen this post contract with direct, uh, used for a four-year term. I do think the language is much, much better written than previous one. The it's renewable, uh, one year, which one year increments after the original four-year.
I'm kind of like.
Yeah, so you with the motion? Okay, I've got a motion right now. Mr. Melton has made the motion to terminate the contract NCIC on July the tenth and enter into a new contract with Correct Solutions for a jail phone system. Is there a second for that motion?
I have a second.
Okay, second by Commissioner West. Now, is there any discussion or questions?
He has to see these contracts and I'm making county business decisions on them before I vote on them. So I'm probably going to vote against it without having the proper information before.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign?
No.
Okay. Okay. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider amendment to Vence County Fuel Card Policy. Kenny, did you want to address that?
Yeah. They didn't go off my ticket on the sheriff. Uh, but in there it says that they only use five hundred dollars a month. But that was in the policy that they brought, told me that they were more than that, so I'll make it okay. After the bills, fuel wheels, the last request, all the sheriff's bills, I made this spreadsheet, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
I just go something together, I couldn't see, and I just just everything, everywhere be, it was so many hundred dollars. But you can see this, that one billion. So it's a boss who's paying five hundred dollars a month. I just wanted to see how many times they go over five hundred dollars a month. So he was requesting that we might, we got the monthly amount for five hundred dollars, two thousand dollars. Take something with that, like he said, in that card, run out. Maxed out at Kirkland, morning, I had things on my head, so I'm just, I guess my recommendation would be to get up to monthly amounts. That's your decision. It's out, but you can, I didn't give you some numbers, so you can move that. So just come off the left. The other bill, I haven't got it, should be getting there or two, but I don't have it for, or. Similar to April or.
Okay. Okay.
That's just my recommendation.
Okay.
What do you guys think?
Okay.
Current policy says five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Obviously, they go with that.
Gas prices have been climbing and varying quite a bit since the one. In addition to that, we've added more deputies. And, uh, in some cases, we're having, because of the car situation, we're having front cars sometimes, you know, every day of the week. Thousand dollars just was closer to what we got there. Five hundred, according to policy, five hundred, I think it was, we called him, we got approval. Gas.
So Kenny's recommendation is to amend the VanZat County Fuel Card Policy from five hundred. Up to a thousand. But prior to, and then you would get permission after that. So is there a motion?
So, Lewis Pearson.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lepre. Any questions or discussion?
We might be able, you think about the sheriff. Buying a, a three thousand, three thousand tank. Putting it out there and having DUCO stood it up and you guys just monitor, you pull it in there with your, with your.
A lot of, the whole part of that is, because we talked about that, uh, is having to go to that certain location, we're running calls. We stay busy. Some days we're busy all day long, everybody is. And you guys say working at the south or the far north, they got to run all the Michael Sheriff's Office gas, a critical situation, but sometimes it's just. Gonna be the latest to get the next blow. So in addition to that, if we get to pursue, we have to go out of county, uh, we end up at. Longview or somewhere, you know, we're sending folks to gas. So, uh, but we're doing that in addition to.
That's what I.
And, as you might not be aware or not, but like all of us, we have that at our, at our facility, but we also have a credit card.
Okay. That might be, yeah, that might be a little.
Each one of us has a credit card to cover things like that.
Is, is those, so the prices that y'all have for those tanks per gallon, is that like a yearly contract?
Yes, it is considerably less than what the going market.
And it's already, we've already got the contract in place.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's so much sense above rat price.
Is that something we need to come back and get permission to do, or is that something we call?
That's for you.
Well, it does.
We, we might, we could do those. Or we could just start getting gas to precinct lines, make us buy gas.
Yeah, just give me your credit card.
If we've trained off. I pull up, Virgil, we'll have a.
At the end of shift and start of shift, do you have detail? Do you have a detail?
Uh, not usually. I mean, it's, they're, they carry over, they, I mean, it's, it's hard to get ready to get it because. Calls stretch out sometimes a lot. I mean, right now, they, they come back, you know, close to the end of shift they can, they spend another couple hours working on the course. So using the other crews already out, take calls.
Phil's next, both ground or?
Above ground.
That'd be something I'd be interested.
I think we need to look into it.
I agree. Okay, I'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting. When y'all can give me the details, just so I can.
I'm sure that ties into the amendment of fuel card somehow. So, uh, we have a motion in the seconds to amend the fuel card, VanZat County Fuel Card Policy from five hundred to a thousand. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign? Item number twelve, discuss and consider moving the fire marshal's administrative assistant from a part-time position to a full-time position. Would you go address the court, Mr. Davis?
Uh, I really don't have much to say about it. I do, from my understanding of it, uh, due to my short time here. She's kind of overloaded right now and in hard to get everything in that she's doing, uh, in just five hours a day or twenty-five a week hours she gets that around. So, uh, it would be beneficial to have her do a full eight-hour day. Uh, I, I, from what has been described to me with her duties as of today, uh, and what we can also assign to her with additional things. She, she can keep her plenty busy. Uh, the budget appears to have it in there with the transition of losing a full-time. Fire marshal and going to part-time. So I think we're clear at the budget and everything towards, I, I would recommend it.
Okay. You want to have any questions for us, David?
It's, uh, it was, I, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. Just our understanding that if we do this, uh, she's gonna go to, uh, uh. On-site sewer, uh, school and get her license to assist Sam. And the, the goal is that she'll work in the office equivalent of a couple nights a week. The rest of the time she'll be out inspecting the sewers, which will give us a two-team, a two-person team on our on-site sewer. To stay up with that, which hopefully that would be done by the time our contract is up with. John over in Edinburgh, and then that'll give Sam time to spend more time on. Paying up issues. So I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
I planned it. Once we get her training, then I plan to try and attend the school at some point too, won't be immediately. So then the three of us will, and it, it also helps her with that training to, when she's doing data entry of that stuff. Because we've got a lot of stuff she was showing me where things have been just paper filed. Uh, and, and it's harder when somebody calls wanting something from two thousand and six to recall that when it's in a box somewhere that she's gotta go dig out or whatever. So she's done great so far, getting everything digitized from here forward, everything's being.
Yes.
Digitally inputted and everything where we can quickly access records for, for that kind of stuff.
And, and so when she's not in office, she will forward the phones so that the phones.
Yes, sir. That, that's the thing I discussed with, with the three of us, we're gonna, uh, somebody's always gonna have the office line forwarded to them so that we're not missing phone calls to keep people.
If I could add, as far as accessing the stuff that I would have access to in the office from, uh, now doing inspections or not. I'm almost positive that I can access everything from the office on a laptop as well. So if I had access to a laptop on the day that I was out, it'll, uh, whether that means borrowing on the Sean or Sam. I would be able to still do all the things as far as interfunctions and emailing people, stuff that they need. Um, the only thing I would be able to do is that entry.
But you could take a note and check. I mean, if you got a call, phone call out at the field, you could make a, I would check on it, move that back and get back in touch.
Yes, sir.
And, uh. And I guess I need to check on, uh, Sean, do you, you have a vehicle with Box Springs? Do you drive a vehicle?
I do have a city car from Box Springs that I take home. But I don't, it's not, I don't use it here.
Correct, correct. I think we will.
So the day is that you're not. Using, I think what we're asking is the, the day is that you're not using your vehicle, she could use it to make inspections.
That's possible. Uh, I mean, it is. I don't know if there's a conflict with it being labeled, it's got police.
We're not talking about your box springs.
No, 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 no.
The county truck has police and everything on it. So I don't know if there's, there's a conflict there with that.
I, I don't believe so. I've been to a lot of schools, like jailer school, and there's a, a jailer that's driving a sheriff's office vehicle going to that school. And, you know, and it says.
He's engaged in going to school too, man. Tom, what are you, what are you sure? She's not a peace officer.
I don't think there's a statute that says non-peace officer, non-driving.
You could have a label on it though, uh, that says some sort of inspection by our part.
Or you just got a bag with.
Yeah. Right.
You know, just on a plain bag or a label that says inspector, whoever, that over where it says law enforcement.
So one, one thing, Sam's hasn't been decal yet. But because they are on exempt plate status, we do have to have a decal in some way. We talked to the, uh, was it? Big, we, big registration gave us a form, uh, the judge, I believe, would have to sign it, uh, with y'all's approval. That we could just de, take the decals off of both of them and go back to just regular plates to where they're similar to like an unmarked vehicle or something. And just, they would still have lots of things on them, they just wouldn't have all the identifiers on them. Um, and that would kind of get us around that issue. And just go back to a, a, I think the cost is, is relatively, I mean, it doesn't change anything. I think you see exempt plates requires us to have them identified.
Yes, but they don't, the exempt place, you don't have to identify them as law enforcement, you can.
Yes, yeah, just say in VanZat County, you're, either way, yeah.
Okay. Well, I would like to have my, I mean, at least VanZat County on there.
Yes.
Because you're walking up on property and, and everything and inspecting individuals' property. I would like to at least have that vehicle identified as property of VanZat County.
Well, I, I think we need the fire marshal.
Yeah.
I mean, that's. I would need that.
You know, if one of them's not, stick to that, you know, you know, just put fire marshals office or something.
That's right, yeah. Yeah.
It's my understanding the decals for Sam's truck are already at the hot sheets. Uh, where we've gotten the other ones, they're, they're already made, they just weren't put on the truck because of the not knowing where the truck was gonna end up being allocated to. Whether it was gonna fall for the sheriff's office or.
Okay. Because fire, fire marshal, Tommy, you don't have to be a, a commissioned officer, so that doesn't, so it, it doesn't make you, it makes you to drive.
For fire marshal, fire marshal office, you said, and law enforcement or police.
Right. So Dan, we're discussing moving fire marshal assist, uh, administrative assistant from part-time position to full-time position. Any, I mean, who, what, what salary? We need to establish salary, I mean. And I'll, I'll tell you, this one slipped past because I thought we should have it on executive session.
Yeah, we do need to set what the pay rate is and what the annual budgeted amount is, and that hasn't been set. You could simply, you know, go with the rate that she's currently at and just build that out for X number of, you know, multiplied by twenty-six, by eighty and all that other. But at this moment, we don't.
Well, I think Sandy, did you put a number, a plugged-in number for black clerk?
I just did, sorry. I just ensured that we had the budget, I think we did. I did not have salary. Twenty-six thousand.
Twelve eighty-eight now.
Okay. Twelve eighty-eight.
Twenty-six thousand seven eight five six four seven.
And, and, and that equates to twelve eighty-eight.
Yes.
Per hour. Okay. Okay, is there a motion?
Would, would that be, would her pay be adjusted once she completes her training?
This is just from now to the end of, to the end of this fiscal year and in budget time, we'll, we'll look at.
We also should, there's paperwork I'll need to change anything with the salary and. And this should have been executed.
I agree.
Whatever amount we budget, as we all know, an employee does not need to be paid at that rate, but that is the cap of their salary. Anything up to that, so contingent on qualifications, training, or whatever else.
Okay.
Sean, you, when you're available, you're gonna help out with the bank issues, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion or?
So, Lewis Pearson.
Okay, state the motion.
Uh, I make the motion that we, uh, move the part-time position at the fire marshal's office, uh, on the clerk's position to full-time. Uh, the pay will be, uh, consistent with the rest of the clerks in the county and, uh, effective on the, the beginning of the next time period.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Lepre. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider ratifying a contract with Cannon Construction for repairs to JP Three NX Building resulting from the February ice storm. This is something that I put on here. You know, we've been trying, we had a company tear the, take out all the damaged material out of that. Building. Commissioner Pearson has been on this from day one since we found the water running down the building. And, uh. We, I did sign a contract last week with Cannon Construction. Uh, that's who is going to go back in with it. And put it all back together, as you stated earlier. Supposed to start this Friday or Monday.
Maybe, maybe it's last Friday.
I thought it was this past Tuesday, yesterday.
That's right. That was supposed to start yesterday. It's correct. You're exactly right.
I thought they were supposed to start yesterday, uh, but they couldn't start until the contract was signed. So we're rat, I'm just asking that we ratify the contract you have. You do have that contract before you, don't you? I made it available.
Yeah.
Uh, that contract so that we can get that building. Uh, you heard the report of the building over here, the NX building, this will get that building. Taken care of also.
Yes, we've been, we've been waiting all this time to do the remodel. We've had all the damage thrown out for two months and the building is clean and, uh. Judge Dunn and his staff have been working there and, uh, now we're just gonna come in and reinstall the sheet rock, tape bed and paint. Uh, new floor covering and just can instruction. It's gonna do that work. I'm making a motion to ratify this.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson to ratify the co, the contract with Cannon Construction for repairs in JP Three NX Building. Okay, most, uh, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion?
Uh, yeah, is this all covered under our insurance?
Hideous.
So everything's covered under the insurance?
Yeah, we've already received a check.
Oh, we don't quite know yet. The.
I didn't hear the question.
Are we doing the repairs with alternate? The alternate is that we can get the, uh, the judge, the, uh, Judge Dunn's bench. Needs to be raised up a little bit to remove the carpet. It was built on top of the carpet. And Josh won't know until he starts trying to raise that up, whether or not that's gonna come apart or not. Uh, if he can get it raised up and everything taken care of, it'll be the right, if he has to rebuild that bench, that's what that five thousand dollars for. He, he thinks, he thinks he won't need the alternate. But he wanted to make us aware.
And we looked at it. I don't think you're gonna use alternate.
But we, we don't, and he doesn't, as, as of the other day, when we met with him, he didn't think so. But he, he just doesn't want any surprises to come to the county, and I appreciate that.
Yeah. So we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion or questions? Being none, all in favor of ratifying the contract, say aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider VanZat County joining National Association of Counties. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider Van Zat County joining National Association of Counties. This has been something that I first heard of it about two years ago, it's been our, our, since, uh, for, for quite a while. Uh, but, uh, it's becoming, uh, I know TAC has recommended that we be a member of NICO. I know all this money that's coming about is, what's that, American Rescue Fund? Uh, NICO is the one that's doing all the, their instrumental work and, and advising what that money can be spent on. So my recommendation would be let, uh, that we join, uh, you see the, uh, schedule sheet of payment, uh, it's a thousand and forty-five dollars per year, uh, but they prorate it per month, we would owe, uh, six hundred and nine dollars to join NICO. Once you join and, and Kenny gets a check too, uh, every one of you'll have access to, uh, you can go on and, and have access to it. It, it, they cover most of the United States. And, uh, as y'all know, every county needs representation right there.
Do they have him paid obvious on that?
Yeah.
They do, they get rid of.
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
I'm sorry.
They, uh, is there a motion to, to, for Van Zat County to join the National Association of Counties? Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson, any other question or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approving the advanced funding agreement and approving the request for waiver for local match funds regarding the funding agreement for replacement of bridge on Van Zat County Road, uh, twenty-one twelve at Candy Creek.
Judge, Commissioner, this is, uh, the, uh, resolution I brought before you, the last convictions court. And there was a mistake in their resolution, not on my part, but on text out. And, uh, they, they, they brought this to us in the wrong template, and they have sent a new contract and our new resolution with, uh, the template that they, uh, should have sent it in, in the first, first place. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, we approve it, that we approve the advanced funding agreement and approving the request for waiver of local match fund regarding the funding agreement for replacement of bridge on Van Zat County Road twenty-one twelve at Candy Creek.
See, got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner West, any questions or discussion? It didn't, it's just a different template?
Yes.
Nothing changed?
Nothing changed.
Okay.
I just wanna, wouldn't, wouldn't, I didn't do it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider twenty-twenty-two renewal for TAC health and, uh, benefits program, Blue Cross and Blue Shield rates. Uh, Dan, did you, would you like to address the court?
Uh, yes, Judge, Commissioner, this is just a annual renewal, uh, the difficult part is that we're hit with a nine-point-two percent increase for our health plan for all employees. So that rate is built based on our usage, much like your car insurance, if you have flames on your car insurance, you can expect that to go up. So, uh, that's where we're at, they offer us a couple of different options, which I gave you those two sheets there, which if we make changes to our plan, we can make those two changes there, but if we make other changes, we lose our grandfather status. So our plan is grandfather plan, which basically means that, uh, when the Affordable Care Act was enacted in March of two thousand and ten, plans under the Affordable Care Act are required to do certain things, provide different resources, defray certain costs with the main cost being on the employer. So our grandfather status means that we are not held to the requirements of the Affordable Care Act, which saves us money, I believe. And so I would recommend that we retain our plan, I would recommend you stay with what exactly the benefits are today, that, that the higher cost, and if you were to change and, and go with one of the two recommendations, what we would see is our employees would be affected by the deductible rates and the prescription drug rates. So I, I just don't see substantial savings with going with that because of penalizing our employees.
So the insurance did go, everyone who believes we shouldn't raise taxes. Uh, the healthcare, what, to summarize that, the healthcare for all the county employees just went up nine-point-two-zero percent, which equates to a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, yeah, so.
And, and now that, let's break it down to monthly, six hundred and, uh, six-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars a month, isn't it, for each employee?
Six sixty-two right now, go.
Yeah. It's gonna go to six, seven twenty-three.
Seven twenty-three.
Yeah, seven twenty-three.
Seven twenty-three thirty.
Perfect for, for each employee.
For each employee, that's right, yeah.
Okay, you've heard Dan's recommendation to stay with the current, uh, plan and, uh, absorb the, the cost increase. Uh, is there a motion to that?
I make a motion to follow the recommendation of, uh, HR.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second?
Sir.
Got a second by Commissioner West, uh, any questions or discussion?
I just wanna say that we've got one of the best in medical benefit plans in this area.
Undoubtedly.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you, they, they, we need to realize that, you go to these other counties or these big cities and look at your plan.
Yeah, and, uh, I think we do, a lot of counties have their employees pay for part of their healthcare. Uh, Van Zat County, uh, we pay their healthcare, you know. I don't know how to, Dan was gonna work on a deal of all the benefits for each employee, uh, for, because, you know, that's part of the, the benefits and salary, I, I hear all the time where we don't make enough money.
Yeah.
And, and, and I agree, I'm not arguing that point, but at the same time, do you appreciate the benefits you're getting?
Yeah, people need to be aware that our benefits package is valued at about ten thousand dollars a year. So every full-time employee, whatever their pay is, there's another ten thousand dollars a year. When we wrap up all of those insurances available and, and the great rates that we get, even on those supplementals, and then your generosity of fourteen paid holidays, our sick time, our vacation time, all of that stuff lumped together, it's about ten thousand dollars a year per, per employee.
Yeah. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider precinct three loading rock for Brazos Trailers at the, uh, Monting Ranch in lieu of trailer lease payment.
Yes, sir, uh, I would take y'all back on memory lane and fresh, refresh you up, um, precinct three and all of us have a valuable, uh, reclaimed rock at the Monting Ranch is where, and that's the location where our cosa used to be set up. And, uh, the, uh, the, the rock is run out there and they had to reclaim all the rock at that location uh, to put it back to the way it was when it went in there. So we purchased, uh, that reclaimed rock there, I've been asked by several people, we, I have, we have our loader out there to load them and the question, the answer's always been no. Well, this time it's a vendor that came to me, which is Brazos Trailers, and said, uh, would you load our trucks while you're there, and so I ch, I called TAC legal, and, uh, they said there was no problem with it, but to run it by our county attorney, so I called Robert Davis, he said there's no problem with it. And, but I asked Robert, I said, I would still like to run it through court, and he, he said, that's great, it's kinda like what you're doing, stay on, on your deal. So, uh, what Brazos Trailer wants, we're, we're not gonna haul equipment out there to load, we're only gonna do it when our loader's there, we're only gonna do it one more load. But if I'm out there loading rock and Brazos Trailer comes in there, we'll load our rock, not for free, and, uh, there'll be a cost in it, and it will come up. We lease, uh, precinct three leases two trailers from Brazos Trailer, uh, every year, and the payment would be in lieu of our tra, of our lease payment. And so I'm seeking court approval and, and just to, uh, let the public know.
Okay.
I, I make a motion that the court, uh, approves it.
Okay, have a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner LaPrada, uh, I know there's some discussion about the liability, I think Tom had some, uh, questions.
Is there a written agreement for this? Or is it kinda just a?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll have to get one.
Okay, so there will be a written agreement, and, and like, is it, it takes us X number of hours that gives us X number of, X amount of credit on our lease payment, or how is it gonna work?
It'll be per load, and if we, if we load their trailer, it'll be a certain dollar amount, and that will go towards the credit of that trailer. And there's no, uh, I'm, I'm glad you said that, I forgot to mention that, nobody will be using county equipment, this will be ran by county employee, and that's why I said we'll only be doing it when we're out there, when, when it's dry and we load rock, I, I have a man there on the loader all day long, loading our trucks, and so.
And this is not a, um, something that trustees are involved in?
No, not at all, not, not at all.
Uh, and the loader is already there, he said, and, uh, do you know if the agreement will address in any way? What if we damage their equipment, what if, what if, you know, somebody gets hurt, who's the liability assigned to, is that what it'd be addressed?
We, we can do that, and, and I was gonna say, you're making this great.
That's mine, as far as legality or, or, or non-legality of doing it, Robert and Ted, no way more about that than I do. I, I couldn't give you an answer on that, it just makes me cringe when I think of, you know, as a lawyer, we, we always think worst case scenario, and it makes me cringe thinking of the possibilities that could go wrong if there's not a written agreement that addresses all of that, so that, that's mine, any questions?
Sure. Have a motion and second, any other discussion or questions?
Should, should, I understand, should a motion be something about an agreement, ending an agreement?
Yeah, yes, yes, there, there'll be a.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, when you say agreement?
Well, I'll get, I'll get Tom to, to, uh, help draw up the agreement that covers the liability and, and all that on the county.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Is that your second? Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget amendments, you have budget amendments before you. Is there any questions about budget amendments? Is there a motion to approve? Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner West, any questions or discussion about the amendment, budget amendments? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices, departments, or county government, approval entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, you have a comment?
Yeah, this is our first meeting of the month, and we had eight of our eighteen recorded in, and that, that's good.
Okay, that.
Would be fast.
Got a motion to approve?
Yes.
Got a motion to approve the monthly reports submitted by the various offices, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about any of the reports? Uh, being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move here.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrada, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we are adjourned.